It's the appointed time and we have a call room. Welcome to the public hearing on the director of audits report number eighty-three. Chapter one, Nano and Advanced Materials Institute. This is the second public hearing. Attending the hearing, we have the following witnesses. Professor Sun Dong, Secretary for Innovation, Technology and Industry. Mister Ivan Lee, Commissioner for Innovation and Technology. Professor Chang Shook Han, Chairwoman Nano and Advanced Materials Institute. Mister Andy Fong, Chief Executive of NAMI and their colleagues. We will continue to consider parts two and three of the report. That is project management, part two and part three of industry income and commercialization. So members could ask questions on both parts. Last time, there were members waiting to speak, Mister Louis Long and Miss Carmen Ken. And Miss Carmen Ken is speaking for the second time. So I will first invite Mister Louis Long to speak. Thank you, Chair. So are we to ask questions on both parts two and three? Yes, well, in that case, my question covers to both parts. Part two, project management, work safety. It is of course very important. And then safety of R and D laboratories, of course, should be even given more weight. Paragraph two point two six of the report. From between twenty nineteen to twenty and twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, one hundred and twenty laboratory safety inspections were conducted. And in sixty-two of the inspections, that's fifty-two percent of the inspections, one or more non-compliances were found. The audit reviewed the inspection reports of the sixty-two inspections with non-compliances. And they found that in nineteen of the inspections, that's twenty-four percent of the sixty-two, there was no documentary evidence showing that remedial action had been taken. So may I ask NAMI this? In the seven laboratories where non-compliances were found, was the situation similar or the same? Or is it the case that each in compliance situation was independent, was different? Who will take the question? Miss Yu. The laboratory safety team will review the, will inspect the safety of laboratories. On the whole, the non-compliances usually involve, say, colleagues referring to wear eye protective gear or the, the, in terms of equipment, there's need to use safe devices such as extension cord or, say, it has to do with the handling of chemical waste. So most of these non-compliances could be remedied at once or within a day. Well, there were not too many different types of risky situations. Mister Lung. So you mean for most of the non-compliances were similar in nature? That means different laboratories, you know, committed similar non-compliances. If that's the case, have you issued guidelines to target such non-compliances so that they won't happen again? Miss Andy Fong, CEO. Thank you, Chair, thank you, Mister Lung. Now, as was mentioned previously, we focus on what we can do, looking forward. Now, we have reviewed, of course, the other recommendations. And in this case, first, we have issued warnings to refer colleagues. We need to keep them informed of the expected standards that they must achieve. And how do we prevent recurrences of similar problems? We've done two things. One, we mentioned the list before, we've redesigned the list based on the MIT standards and the China Science Institute standards. So we've redesigned the list. And then we also make sure that it's recorded as to when actions were taken. That's the China Academy of Science standard as well. So the relevant technical team of the laboratories, such as the architectural team or medical team, they will do inspections every week. And then we want to add a second layer of protection. So based on the newly redesigned list, every two months, we don't just leave it to the safety team to do the inspections. The technical team will accompany the laboratory safety team to conduct inspections. So that means there will be approval from a second party. So there's need to record the approval and there's a timestamp. And we have also improved the inspection procedures. So we are confident that we'll be able to prevent similar problems. And we have already put the arrangement in place. Mister Lung, thank you for your answer, CEO, because you give such a comprehensive answer. I don't have to ask my next question. In that case, I'll move on to part three. I have two questions on part three. Paragraph three point six. ITC informed the panel on commerce, industry, innovation and technology of LECO that it was considering to raise the target on level of industry and other income to forty percent in twenty twenty-four to twenty-five and would explore the possibility of raising the target further to fifty percent in the long run. So a question for the ITC. In twenty twenty-four to twenty-five and in the long run, are you confident that NAMI could reach the enhanced target? Miss Ivan Lee. Last time after we reported to the reference panel, I formally informed NAMI that in twenty-four, twenty-four to twenty-five, the target on level of industry and other income would be formally raised to forty percent. In fact, it's the same target for all R and D centers and they are all following this new target. Well, have regard to the overall economic situation, we'll also consider the progress and response of the work of the R and D centers. We'll see if we could further increase the target of fifty percent. But at least for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, we're confident they will be able to reach the target of forty percent. Mister Louis Lung. Why are you confident? What is the basis for that confidence? That you could reach the raised target? Mister Ivan Lee. Well, this is actually an ongoing process. Every quarter, they have to give a report on their latest work status and progress. And so based on their progress, we believe they're able to reach the target. Mister Louis Lung. Paragraph three point four, one four and table seventeen. Now, between twenty nineteen to twenty and twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, NAMI filed four hundred and eleven patent applications with one hundred and forty-two patents granted. But then paragraph three point one eight mentions that there are eighty-one applicants, patents for shelved applications, eighty-one shelved applications. So are there measures to prevent shelved patent applications? Professor Chen, well, before I answer the question, let me talk about the concept of patent applications. In twenty twenty-three, US changed the patent application to first inventor to file. So that means the first inventor will file an application that changes the whole idea of patent application. That is, if you have a good invention, you must file the patent application as soon as possible. So, and that's about the professional application. So that means we know we have something good in the rule. And then after legal advice, we believe we could make an application. So we will immediately therefore file the application. But within a year, we have to decide whether we will formally file the application. Now, when we file formal applications, say, with China, then it takes four years for the application to be approved. So we may file the application, but it may take four years if it's filing with China. And with the US, the period is a bit shorter, three to four years. So why does it take three or four years with US or four years with China? It's because after you file a formal patent application, all the relevant patent lawyers or proprietors of patents will consider whether your application may affect them. So the whole process is works like this. Someone's, we file a formal application, then someone may challenge it or object to that. And then we have to give response. And so it's a to and fro correspondence process and it will take three and four years. And then during the period, we will decide whether we'll proceed with the application. Now, after we file the professional application, maybe we have improved the technology so we could apply in a different way. Or if we proceed with the formal application, and then we have to respond to questions from patent, other patent companies or owners. And then we find that maybe we don't stand a chance win or we don't have as much resources as they have. And if we drag on with the case, we won't get the, we granted the patents. So that's why after filing the provisional application, we may decide not to proceed further with the application based on technical or commercial reasons. And as to whether our application will be granted, it depends on whether our lawyers are able to submit substantial evidence and if the other patent owners have a case to challenge us. And maybe during the process, we have improved our technology and then we may change the application. Well, if you look at the applications we have filed, say, with China, about one-third of the applications are successful. And with the US, about two-thirds of the applications are successful. But of course, it's not up to us whether to grab the patent. And all we can do at NAMI is to try to present a case in such a way to make it a success. And I'm glad to tell you about twenty, about seventy-four percent of our patent applications on the whole are granted. And that's already a very good result in a sector. Mister Louis Lung. If I could seek further information to confirm whether my understanding is correct. Just now, the chairman, or the chairwoman, Professor Chang, said that in China, the success rate of patent applications is about one-third and in filing with US is about two-thirds. I think for that percentage, you've actually discounted the shelved applications, right? That means the denominator is reduced and that's why you come up with one-third and two-thirds. Is that the case? Chairwoman, Professor Chen? Well, yes, that's the case. Provisional application is one figure and the success rate of formal application is a different figure. So it's based on the success as in the formal applications, right? Yes, that's the information available online. Okay, I got it then. And you explained the whole application process just now. Again, I just want to confirm whether I have followed properly. So does it mean that based on your past experience and the overall situation, so the about twenty percent of the applications are shelved? So that, is that really the reality? It doesn't matter how hard you try to improve your application, you won't be able to lower the shelving rate, is that what you meant? Professor Chen? Well, perhaps the term I use is for professional applications of patent, the ecology is such that a certain percentage of the applications will not proceed for sure. So there is no case of if we do more, then we will be lower, will be able to proceed with more professional applications. That is, after a year, when we file the formal application, we have to consider whether our technology has changed. And for competitors around the world, that is companies owning similar technologies, how will their legal and technical teams challenge our applications? So all I could say is that we'll try our best. But then I must also state here, we want to make sure that we granted proper patent for our intellectual property. So that's why we will focus on applications where we send a chance to succeed. Or where, because with patent application, that many professional lawyers rely on such cases for business. And so we have to compete on technology as well on resources. Mister Louis Lung. Now, I'm not in the R and D field, of course. So I think Professor Chang's explanation is most inspiring. I just look at it from the point of view of a businessman. And I think your approach is right. So I've finished my questions. Thank you, Miss Carmen Ken.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning. Paragraph three point one seven and paragraph three, paragraph three point seven and paragraph three point eight. It's differences in reported level of industry and other income. Now, in the report, it's mentioned that the ITC submits, submitted progress reports to the panel of commerce, industry, innovation and technology of LECO. And then NAMI have their own, and NAMI have their own reports. But then there are differences in the levels of industry and other income reported. That's in paragraph three point seven and three point eight. So first, may I ask the director of audit, when you prepare this report, you found the differences. Did you find out what the differences were exactly for the accounting basis? Can I invite the deputy director to answer the question? Yes, the deputy director, please. Assistant director, rather, please. Now, three point eight A, ITC responded to our inquiry. ITC explained that different methodology was adopted in calculating the level of industry and other income by ITC and NAMI. And that's why there were differences in the figures. My question is, what were the differences? Miss Flora Wen, Assistant Director of Audit. Our initial understanding is that they calculate the income a bit differently. ITC and NAMI may count certain income, but not other in different reports. So you have to ask NAMI for the details or ITC for the details. Well, can I ask ITC to explain why are we so concerned about this issue? Because if this is listed as set out in the report this way, it will give members or the public the perception that the report submitted by ITC to panel exaggerated the figures or blew up the figures, that would be the impression, perception. And then for the NAMI's report, the figures were lower, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four, thirty-two point four percent. And then in the same table of ITC, in nineteen twenty to twenty, NAMI figures forty-seven percent and twenty-three, twenty-three, thirty-five percent. As for ITC report, that's a percentage of eight percent higher. So is it because the content covered is different? That's why the income covered is different? So is it like in part two, the notes are not clear? Because the content is different. And then we look at the performance target and then is how many percentage of the perfect target is achieved? It depends if the basis is different, then of course, and the percentage will vary.
Mister Ivan Lee, thank you, Miss Carmen Khan, for your question. Basically, like what was said for the last chapter, it's about whether some content has been included in a note. In general, when we report to the council, we would always say industry and other income. In the annual reports of the NAMI, of NAMI, it would just be industry income. So the denominator has always been different. And we would include other non-ITF-funded projects in other income as we saw NAMI do. But then we do not, the ITC does not consider that to be an industry income. Upon the review made by the Audit Commission, we in future, in papers for the Legislative Council, we will have a note to explain what the income sources are so as to not have any misunderstanding. Miss Carmen Khan, I want to ask, so with the numerators submitted in the paper submitted to LECO, you would have larger numerators because you would have included other sources of income. So the percentage could reach forty-six percent in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. But in NAMI's annual reports, they would only count IT-funded projects income. It does not include income from other government funds. So it's thirty-eight point two percent in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. It should be a difference in the numerators installed of denominators. Because only with that, we will have a larger percentage in the papers submitted to the Legislative Council. Mister Ivan Lee. Basically, right, we do not include ITF income in the denominator, that is industry income. That's why, basically, yes, it is a difference in numerators. Miss Carmen Khan. So should we go with the approach adopted by NAMI? Or should we adopt the approach that you have been using for papers submitted to Legislative Council? You have been talking about adopting a consistent approach, but I'm not sure which approach you are going to take eventually. Thank you, Mister Ivan Lee. Well, in future, in the papers submitted to Legislative Council, we will have a note saying what the income sources are. In NAMI's annual reports, there will be more details. They will talk about each and every project. So it has always been clear in the annual reports of NAMI. In LECO papers in future, we will have a note explaining what projects income is included. Thank you, Miss Carmen Khan. Having heard what Mister Lee and the Audit Commission said, there is just a discrepancy because of the different reporting approaches. There is no malicious intent involved. And of course, I guess because they had different things to explain when they report to the Legislative Council, they had a different approach. I guess in the future, you need to make sure you can justify the different approaches. And the Audit Commission, when they ask you about this, you did not have much of an explanation to offer, causing a misunderstanding. Because I did see the Audit Commission representative did not know really why there was a different basis in calculation either. Now, in another paragraph, that is for denominators, for forty-six percent of such figures, you have reached forty percent target. And when you increase the target to fifty, would it be possible to achieve? For forty percent to fifty percent, right now, the figure achieved by NAMI is thirty-eight percent. In future, you are asking them to increase the target on level of industry and other income to forty percent or even fifty percent. How can they actually achieve the target? Mister Ivan Lee. We had reference to the latest trends and NAMI's feedback on industry sentiment for starting new projects in a particular year. In fact, if we refer to table fifteen, there are fluctuations. In twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, NAMI did achieve thirty-five percent. And in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, it has got to forty-six percent. There may be fluctuations due to the macroeconomic situation. The more prudent approach, we believe, is to set a target for this year first to forty percent. It is an important trend that we are trying to make NAMI to increase industry participation more. So we are confident that we will achieve the target of fifty percent in the future. Miss Carmen Khan, I did want to quote table fifteen. And Mister Ivan Lee just so happened to have quoted table fifteen. I would say that NAMI has been doing pretty well. So I think we can be more ambitious in achieving a fifty percent target, except HKRITA, who has not met the fifty percent target. In fact, other R and D centers have made the fifty percent target. So I think you can be more ambitious in setting your targets. Next, I want to ask a question. Have you asked NAMI what the actual situation is regarding patent applications? And what strategy they are adopting when applying for patents? What paragraphs are you referring to? Table seventeen and three point twenty? Yes, Professor Nelson Lam, we have been communicating with NAMI on this consistently. Thank you. Well, so why is said that the Audit Commission thinks that there should be less discontinued applications? I think we should allow for trial and error with applying patents. And in fact, the chairwoman said that there is a mechanism to file a professional application as soon as possible. If there is a mechanism that before the end of the professional patent application period, there are justifications for not going forward with the professional application. There are justifications for not going forward with the professional application to file a formal application. That this is a valid strategy. Why did the Audit Commission make the relevant recommendation, Professor Nelson Lam? Let me clarify something. We do not only have professional applications being discontinued. In fact, if you refer to paragraph three point one eight. With formal patent applications, including standard patent applications, that is. They have also been discontinued. So we have been calling for a decrease in discontinued applications. But there's always some room for determining the percentage. So we have been looking to discuss that with NAMI. I want to ask about the relevant note for the table. Note one. That would include expected expired professional patent applications and discontinued applications. And discontinued applications would represent discontinued standard patent applications and expired professional patent applications without filing standard patent applications. But there is also a particular category for expired professional patent applications. So does that refer only to expired patent, professional patent applications? I don't understand why the numbers in Roman numeral three would be higher than Roman numeral two if the discontinued application category would include expired professional patent applications. Well, Miss Flora Wen, Assistant Director of Audit. I'm asking notes one and two. I'm not asking about note three as Miss Flora Wen was just talking about. Thank you. Note one says the figures represent discontinued standard patent applications and expired professional patent applications without filing standard patent applications. And note two refers to expected expired professional patent applications. I do not really see what the difference is. All right. Professor Nelson Lam, let me offer a simple explanation. The discontinued applications include two of them. One being the discontinued standard patent applications. And the actively discontinued expired professional patent applications. For the Roman numeral, Roman numeral three category, it is about not doing anything about the professional patent applications and they have expired naturally. Miss Kaminkan, I think I would like to ask for some explanation from NAMI. Professor Ching.
Thank you, Miss Kaminkan, for your question. Well, I think table seventeen does not represent the ecosystem fully. The professional applications would take one year to expire and then the actual applications would take three to four years to process. Whether it's due to our strategy, insufficient resources, or we do not have better technologies, we would discontinue certain applications. As for why the numbers seem to be so confusing. It's because the table does not spell out how the ecosystem works. It kind of like, it's kind of like a school. In twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. We have seen some figures. We have a school with a particular number of students. The students may be in different grades. So student in grade one would be, say, those in the professional application stage. And those who are moving along in the process. So there will be entry of students, there will be students leaving. Depending on the number of entry of students and the number of students leaving every year, they are different every year. So there are fluctuations and there are differences in the numbers. In fact, when I read the numbers in the table, I do not quite understand how things work either. But that, what I said is basically how the mechanism works. Because there are, for example, students entering the school and graduating. So it is not exactly a static number every year. I do understand why the member had trouble understanding the table's numbers, though. Thank you, Miss Kaminkan.
Well, I think they are referring to the professional patent applications submitted. Right in the Roman numeral three category. Referring to the information in note two, it says basically professional patent applications filed to patent offices. I do understand Professor Nelson Lam's saying that with note one, it would refer to expired professional patent applications without filing standard patent applications. So I think it's the other way around in note one. It is actually about the number including expired professional patent applications without filing standard patent applications. And with note two, it would have a larger number because it would refer to the general figure of professional patent applications filed to patent offices. Otherwise, it can't explain why the numbers in category three would be higher than those in category two. I think professional, Professor Ching has explained it a little. Will Professor Ching elaborate on the explanation? No, I think the Audit Commission compiled this table. Can I direct this question at the Audit Commission?
All right, Professor Nelson Lam. Thank you. I will give a simple response. It would just be a test road statement. I agree with what Professor Ching said. In accounting, we need to present certain loopholes. We have to present snapshots. So it may seem to be the case that the figures can't really agree. Because we have patents piling up over the years. Every year, we have new patent applications. And we also have some patent applications carried over from the previous year or years. So we have seen patent applications being discontinued or being formally filed after a certain number of years. That's why the figures do not really match. In the sense that it may not explain clearly why certain numbers are larger.
Miss Kaminkan. I think with the presentation of the table. It may seem to be the case that the figures are so confusing, it may even be hard for NAMI to explain why the numbers are presented that way. But with the application strategy, they did say earlier there were five categories. And the C E O said in future, they would focus on development of battery technologies. I believe in the past five years, they had different strategies. They had different folkai. They perhaps found out certain technologies might not be as competitive as those of the competitors. So we shouldn't focus on the aspect that they are discontinuing applications. We should allow for trial and error. We need to, in fact, understand that there may be insufficient power in the intellectual property department. Whether it's with patent offices locally or in mainland China or the U S. They are, the institute is just trying to adopt a strategy that is competitive or that is the approach that they are taking. Right, I believe Miss Kaminkan is just offering some advice to NAMI. Who is going to take this? Professor Ching.
Thank you. I think this is the reality in research and development. We need to constantly conduct experiments. We have to adopt different approaches. In fact, when it comes to R and D and innovation. We are competing with companies who are very endowed and they have many talents. We are competitive, so we should be proud of our achievements so far. Let me give you an example. In the past four years, we took part in a competition in the U S R and D one hundred. Every year, they would hand out approximately one hundred prizes. We are competing with M I T Lincoln Lab and the Berkeley Lab. In the past four years, we have seen some figures, over two hundred talents in our teams in the national labs. We have in the past four years got top one. We have five top one hundred universities in the world. The R and D institutes in Hong Kong are very competitive in the world. We have a much smaller population compared to the rest of the world. But we have many resources invested in R and D. And let me remind you, the R and D one hundred awards is a competition in the U S. You may challenge the fact that we are not producing research that is benefiting the public. But we have a technology that won an award in twenty twenty two that produces plastic bottles that would benefit, uh make it more convenient for the public to consume relevant contents. And we also have batteries technology. We have a casing that would maintain the stability of batteries operating at very high or very low temperatures. And as the C E O said, we have been working with the Airport Authority on this. Because the Airport Authority is exactly asking for batteries to operate stably at very high as well as very low temperatures. In future, we will continue to expand the usage of such operations. So I would like to thank members for pointing out some of the things that we can improve on. But as a Hong Kong citizen, we should be proud of our achievements, Miss Kaminkan. You are now past twenty five minutes, but perhaps I'll let Professor Sun talk more about this.
Thank you, Chairman. We need patent in order to get awards. So we need patents in the first place. That's exactly why we need to get patents first. This is very important to Hong Kong. Without patents, it is impossible for us to receive rewards, to receive awards. So our strategy is that we need to be fast. We need to obtain provisional patents. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to obtain standard patents. We need to do so before patents expire. So I want to ask the C E O. Will they review the standard patent applications? Mister Look will ask questions, so I will ask the administration to respond first, Mister Andy Feng. Yes, indeed, we will review patents every year in order that we won't lose time. Yes, we do have this mechanism in place. Miss Kaminkan, any follow up?
No.
Next member, Mister Michael Look. I'd like to ask about three point two seven. That is most platform projects and seed projects don't bring about any income, um licensing fee income. When we work on I N T projects, do we work on them only when they are going to succeed? Do we need to allow errors? Just like playing basketball, if you don't try to shoot a ball, then you won't get a point. If the success rate, if the hit rate is not high, then the basketball player may not be a good player. Let me look at it this way. For platform projects and seed projects. Sixty eight percent did not generate any licensing fee income. Nine of the projects were completed for over four years. But then they did not generate any licensing fee income. For another twenty three projects, they brought about seven point two million licensing fee income. The audit analyzed the situation. And the average percentage was only seven point four percent. The return was quite low. We need a reference value. For other projects, that is contract research projects and collaborative projects. Is the commercialization rate or the number of, I mean, or the income from the patents larger? Did they generate more income, Mister Andy Feng? First of all, for platform collaborative and seed projects, they are different. First of all, on seed projects, they are exploratory. In other words, there is no such technology in the market. That's exactly why we call it seed project. It will bring about commercial value. We replied to the audit that back then. When there is no licensing fee income, there will still be licensing licensing fee income from the downstream platform projects. Seed projects do not often bring about medium income. That is normal. For platform projects, it means at least industry participation is ten percent. In other words, for a project worth one million dollars, at least a hundred thousand dollars come from the industry. The industry wants to have returns, so the industry worked with us in promotion together. So when we charge the licensing fee, licensing fee income, we charge based on the proportion. And the third category is collaborative projects. The percentage is more than fifty percent, at least fifty one percent. So for a one hundred dollar project, the industry will have to pay fifty one dollars. So the commercialization rate is higher. Licensing fee income as a result will also be higher. First of all, we did work to enhance the mechanism. There wasn't any guideline on how much licensing fee income to be charged for project. Now we have a framework. We have a percentage point for reference. We didn't have a mechanism in place, but then in October, we already had a mechanism. With a new mechanism. Where the platform project or collaborative project, there will also be more licensing fee income. Mister Michael Look. I understand for different projects, the commercialization rates or the income will also be different. But NAMI doesn't just work on frontier research. For forward-looking research, the licensing fee income and commercialization rate should receive our attention. For selection, that is what projects to be selected, to be platform projects or seed projects. This is important. Just like the analogy I gave. Just like the analogy I gave, don't just do research for the sake of it. If your research projects doesn't keep with the times of the market, then no one would want to invest in your patent. Did you target the local market, the mainland market, or the overseas market in order to conduct publicity? There are a lot of patents around the world, so we need to have our selling point. The compet- the competition is keen right now. Mister Andy Feng. Thank you, Chairman. From the figures, we could see the end result. We need to analyze the reasons. Then we work to enhance the situation. We mainly support S M Es. So it's actually quite difficult in the past few years to invest. We focused on helping the users, the S M Es to look for users. Since the P A C meeting last week, I met with the M T R C L Airport Authority and so on. They support our research and development. We need to let these large-scale organizations understand our research value. Then we create downstream projects. Afterwards, they will have confidence in working with us on research projects. S M Es have their own constraints, they have their own difficulties. So when we can commercialize projects, large-scale organizations will give confidence to manufacturers, then they will be willing to spend on R and D. Mister Michael Look, on publicity and promotion, I have already asked questions. I now want to turn to the demand side. How can we better connect with the industry to know what demands they have? Do we have forums and so on to keep in touch with the industry? The industry may lack funds to undertake research. They could at most take probably ten percent. But the research may have great value. We need to think from the perspective of the industry. We need to know their needs. What is the operation at present? On promotion, in the healthcare sector, in the construction sector, we take part in their trade unions. So our team takes part in their meetings from time to time. We introduce to them the R and D projects where we are working on. We are in touch with the industry and that's exactly how we create seed projects. Rest assured, we have been in touch with industries. I have taken part in three to four such sessions. Mister Michael Look. Well, I'm not sure if I asked my questions clearly. I've heard about the promotion after the R and D. But I mean, while you were planning the R and D project, did you first of all talk to the industry first? You understand their demand before you kickstart a research project? How can we improve the process? Well, Mister Andy Feng meant they take part in different trade unions meetings or chambers of commerce meetings, then they understand the needs of the industry. Mister Andy Feng, do you have anything else to add? Thank you, Chairman. Well, let me put it this way. On promotion, it's very important to stay true to our mission. The setup of Nami is to undertake advanced frontier research. We need to groom talents. We need to dovetail with the green policies of the country as well as the carbon emission reduction policies of the nation. So construction, healthcare, battery demand, low carbon, and so on, which directions should we work towards? We believe we have enough information to determine uh what we should work on our R and D projects. So you need to have more communication with the industry so that they will let you know what they exactly need, then you can base on it to work on your R and D projects. Thank you. We need to develop the battery technologies. Our country is leader in electric vehicles, in battery, and so on. It's no exaggeration to say that our country is leading in these areas by far. Nami has limited resources, so there is no absolute com- com- um absolute competitive edge in this area. Well, I want to know why you decided on work on mainstream technology areas or batteries. Efficiency, income. Your question is more about policy point. Will you still have question? Professor Sun, do you want to take these questions? Mister Feng? Mister Andy Feng? Thank you. We don't compete with large enterprises when it comes to battery materials. We work with new energy companies. We are responsible for different areas. So it is not the case that we will lose out to other competitors. It is not competition. Last week, we explained why we should work on batteries. Let me give you some examples. Many organizations or A A H K also want to develop long-life battery packs. The A A has assessed the situation and they found that there are no alternatives that can satisfy the demand. After tests of six months to nine months, from fifty to six thousand battery packs. The industry recognized our projects. Our technologies were commercialized and then we produced battery packs. We don't compete with large-scale battery companies or factories. This is not competition. So I look forward to using Nami research batteries on our, on our cars or phones. Thank you. Mister Potte, Deputy Chair. We want to achieve commercialization and it is also one of the objective criterion. Just now Mister Michael Look asked about three point two seven. Sixty eight percent of the projects did not generate any licensing fee income. And the average percentage was only seven point four percent, which is on the low side. Mister Andy Feng said that since October, there has been a new mechanism. I had a chance to look at the previous record. In Director of Audit Report sixty one, in chapter nine, back in twenty thirteen, there was a report covering two chapters. In paragraph four point eight, A and B paragraphs, it is said that we lacked a criterion and guideline on how the I T C devise guidelines on revenue. Just now, Mr. Andy Feng said that we have a more objective mechanism since October. In paragraph three point two eight, Nami's senior management discussed this, but there were no new guidelines setting up the rationale for it.
And another point I'd like to clarify. Mister Andy Feng referred to percentages for the three types of projects, a platform collaborative or seed projects. In choices on patent applications, I want to talk about income and patents. Now, for three, the, for these three types of project, is there any difference in terms of the percentage of successful patent applications? Mister Andy Feng? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mister Chair. Now, there is not a direct relevance, uh, that is for different patents, um, uh, the number of projects we started. Now, whenever we are apply for I T F fund, there's a technical committee to assess each project, the cost, the benefits, and, um, the novelty will be considered. That means we have done all the searches and, uh, can we be sure that there is no conflict with existing patents? So there is a high chance of, um, um, successful patent applications. Now, um, my, uh, I T C colleagues and, uh, our chairman will, chairwoman will all, all make sure that's the case. And so then, when our I D, R and D is, uh, completed, then we have a special team, a dedicated team to apply for patents. So we start a project and then our R and D is successful. Then we see how we apply for patent and that's the process we follow. Mister Porter. Well, Mister Feng talked about the three types of project, a platform collaborative and seed projects. Now for platform projects, that's, um, less than ten percent contribution. And seed project is a zero percent contribution. That means the government funds the entire project. Now, when we choose, um, for which project you apply for provisional or formal application, uh, do you consider the angle that, say, for apart from the novelty factor you mentioned? Have you, do you also consider the return rate? Uh, so to decide whether it's worth proceeding with the project? Because, um, as Professor Jiang mentioned earlier, we, uh, pitched against, um, powerful, um, teams and companies with many resources around the world. So do you consider that angle? Mister Andy Feng. There are three types of projects called, uh, uh, seed. Um, you know, for, uh, the collab, uh, the platform project and our partners will, uh, they, they contribute fifty one percent of the cost. So they will, um, apply for patents because they have the, uh, the, the commercial reasons to do so. So when, uh, the contribution from the industry is more than fifty one percent, then it will be for our partners to apply for patents. And for the other two types of project, well, we agree with this, um, uh, discovery. We will make sure that in future we have to consider what we can do to improve the chances of, um, um, successful grant of patents. Thank you. Now, applying for a patent and then success, uh, being successful with the application, well, that's a process. So it starts from R and D and then commercialization. And if we are, uh, we have, uh, great, we achieve success along the way. And of course, at the end, probably there will be higher return because the patent is successful. And, uh, and, uh, twice, as mentioned, that Hong Kong people are proud. But then if along the way, we're not able to, um, generate income, then maybe it's not worth it. So I think it's whether the government wants cash or, uh, 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 a reward or award. And, and so maybe we will develop a technology that's leading in the world, but then we don't earn much in income, then, um, what would you consider to be more important? Mister Andy Chen Feng. Well, I think, uh, we, we all follow what the figures mean. So what do we need to do? Now, we, uh, on increasing industry income, uh, we've said that before. So I'll repeat that point. We will, um, 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 introduce the, uh, R and D outcome to, um, large corporations which may have a demand. Uh, in past few years, we have not done enough promotion that respect either locally or in the Greater Bay Area. And then just now, we mentioned a few successful cases, um, uh, refilling. Well, there's some group, a pro fat group, uh, agrees to use our refilling material, uh, backfilling materials for three years. So, uh, the, this company has tested, uh, the materials and they think it's good. So, uh, in the past, um, we don't have enough promotion on, uh, on our, um, R and D outcome. And so now we need to promote our, uh, R and D outcome on a much larger scale and that will help to improve our return rate. Now, for example, M T R L, well, has not formal collaboration with Nami. And then, uh, they are interested in our other technologies on reducing carbon emission and so on. So certainly there are values in our R and D outcome, but we need to do a better job in promotion and we're confident in that. Now, in three point, uh, para three point two nine, uh, you say there are two main reasons for the low, uh, re- in return, return. Um, only sixteen or thirty two percent of the projects have been completed for less than a year. That's why, uh, you still don't have, uh, you have not, don't have time yet to develop the potential. And the other reason is that sixty percent, um, were just seed projects which were exploratory in nature. So it's just like grouping in the dark, uh, you don't know if, if you will, um, use any result. Now, uh, what I followed from, um, Mister Andy Feng said is that there are no, uh, issues with, um, partnership and, and and for partners contributing more than fifty one percent is for them to decide whether to apply for patent. We have no say. But then for the other types of, the other two type of project, we have much more say. So in applying for patents, say among the three types of project, shall we only apply for patent for collaborative projects? Well, that's not absolute, but will that be our focus? Because then we can ensure we have a high income. Because then we can ensure we have a high income or lower cost. Because then we don't have to, um, devote resources to, um, respond, um, responding to challenges by major corporations with strong legal teams. Mister Andy Feng. If I may clarify further the figures. Uh, paragraph three point two seven to three point two nine of the report. Now, uh, fifty projects which did not generate any licensing fee income. Uh, sixteen of the projects were seed projects and twenty were, um, platform projects. And then thirty-two percent of sixteen projects actually, um, generated new projects that, uh, create income. Um, some are, uh, still exploratory seed projects, and there are other projects where there's further collaboration. So we provided all the figures to the audit. So, so yes, we need to do better, uh, uh, in certain areas, but then definitely the seed projects need eventually to other projects, um, and we've submitted figures and audit accepted the figures. Mister Porter. Uh, question on patents, uh, because I want the rec- the record to be, uh, uh, accurate. Professor Jiang said that, um, and when we file patent applications with China or the U S now, usually in China, the whole period takes about four, four years and, uh, the U S, um, if, uh, for the U S, it takes about three to four years for filing, uh, for processing the application. And then in three point one four, the conclusion of the audit, uh, sorry. Uh, perhaps I'm being a bit harsh. It says it takes at least two to three years for approval. Here, there's no distinction between the U S and, um, mainland. Well, that's, uh, one figure, one, one period, uh, we see. And then table seventeen. Uh, um, professional application, twelve to, uh, uh, a professional patent expires in twelve to eighteen months from the date of filing. So has the audit checked the accuracy of these, uh, figures with NAMI? Director of Audit, we submitted the entire, we gave the entire report to NAMI focused, uh, to, to study, and they did not identify any problems. So can I, um, ask the, 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 uh, uh, ask the NAMI, uh, who, whose figures are accurate? Miss Yu. Now, three point, paragraph three point one four, that refers to professional patent application before the submission of formal, uh, uh, standard, um, um, patent application, because the reason is because, uh, standard patent application process takes at least, at least two to three years for approval. So that's the experience, uh, we gathered from the industry. Now, at least and average are two different things. What about, uh, footnote, uh, note two of table seventeen? Um, Professor Jiang, oh, sorry, Professor Jiang, yes. Note two, it says that a provisional patent, uh, uh, takes twelve to eighteen months, so that means can be completed in a year. Page forty-five of the English version, note two. Well, that's correct. Twelve to eighteen months, that's the provisional application, that's the time allowed for provisional application. If, uh, within twelve to eighteen months, a standard application is not filed, then the provisional application will be shelved. That's the, um, process. Thank you. Thank you for your clarification. I have no further questions for now. Miss Carmen Ken, you still have questions? Yes. Mister Chairman. Now, we received a set of papers yesterday, Gen four, that is. Uh, we received the, uh, set of papers rather late yesterday, around five P M. I spent a lot of time reading the document. I read till two A M last night. And about the subvention agreement. Understand, the subvention agreement is of course a contract, and it's for members' reference only. And then it's the same with the corporate governance manual, uh, because there are provisions on procurement and recruitment. I agree that, uh, the information should be for members' eyes only. Uh, eh, eh, with the subvention agreement, it was revised in twenty eighteen. I wonder if, um, the bureau can tell us the following. Now, for the twenty eighteen agreement and on, um, income arising from commercialization, uh, the income can be used in a way agreed to by the commissioner of, uh, the, of innovation and technology. Why is there such a clause in the agreement? In the original memorandum, it says that NAMI is set up as a trustee. So it holds all revenue income on behalf of the government. It explains why in the last public hearing, when we mentioned the, uh, uh, income and expenditure, how come it's always balanced? Well, that, if you read the memorandum, you know why. I believe other R and D, uh, institutes are of a similar arrangement. So the, um, R and D center is just a trustee on behalf of the government to carry out R and D. And so when, uh, the income is not used and it, the unused part should be returned to the government because the, the, uh, the, the R and D center is only a trustee. Now, twen- in the twenty eighteen document, it's mentioned of, um, a commercialization income, for example, licensing fee income just mentioned, or, uh, the deputy chairman asked about the income arising from collaboration with the industry. We want to maximize the income. But then in the twenty eighteen revised version of the subvention agreement, it says that the income could be used, um, uh, the income from commercialization could be used, subject to the agreement of the commissioner. Wha- what's that really about, Mister Ivan Lee? Um, eh, my recollection is as Mister Carmen, Carmen Ken said. Now, if, uh, R and, if a particular R and D center does a good job in, uh, R and D, and so it earns, um, uh, high income, then that, uh, the, the, the unused portion should be returned to the government. But then, in twenty eighteen, we had a discussion, we wanted to give more incentives, uh, for the commercialization of R and D outcomes. So therefore, a certain percentage of the commercialization income could be retained for, uh, say, the strategic government of our R and D center, or staff training, or for the procurement of additional equipment, so that they can, uh, do R and D even better. So each year, on the use of, um, commercialization income, uh, there is need to submit a proposal for approval by I T C. Um, from what I recall, most of that income is essentially spent on staff training, uh, promotion activities, or, uh, the procurement of equipment, mostly. Thank you. Miss Carmen Ken, thank you for your explanation. So for the twenty eighteen version of the subvention agreement, it's the last revision. As for the operating period of NAMI, uh, is until, um, electrical funding is exhausted, or, uh, that's a termination of the agreement among the three parties. Now, uh, the latest policy direction is to merge, um, NAMI with Astrae. So does it mean that in future, electrical funding, uh, or will be duration for electrical funding, uh, with the extension of this agreement? Because, um, that's what, so far, what the subvention agreement says, but, uh, what actually will happen? Um, thank you.
Mister Ivan Lee. When we suggested the merger between Astrae and NAMI, we have to consider different aspects. We have engaged a consultant to help the government formulate transitional arrangements. One, the consultant suggests a direction, we will follow that direction. If NAMI is indeed merged with Astrae, we will, with the consent of NAMI, terminate this tripartite agreement because there is no longer a need for this agreement with NAMI. It has always been quite flexible with the termination of agreement, and we will follow up with the U S T and NAMI on this in future. I want to ask about N X five in Gen four. N X five is the article of association and memorandum of NAMI. And it was updated last in two thousand and eight, this document. So the memorandum and articles of association, well, I want to refer specifically to the memorandum. Well, there is no specific reference, so I can only say it's page seven of N X five. So it is said if such winding up or dissolution is to happen, the assets, as NAMI is a company limited by guarantee, cannot be distributed. Well, I believe there is a definition for initial period, so if NAMI shall commence winding up or dissolution process anytime during the edition, initial period, upon such winding up or dissolution, the property will be assigned or transferred to the government. If it is to happen after the initial period, the surplus property will be distributed amongst the members, that would include the U S T. So how does it really work, Mister Ivan Lee? This is something related to law. I think we definitely have to look into it, which is why we hired a consultant to develop the proposal for the merger. All right, Miss Khan? I only wanted to clarify this. I have no other questions. If members have no further questions, I will let the deputy chairman speak. Well, I have some follow-up questions, having heard what Miss Carmen Khan said. Mister Ivan Lee explained the addendum to the tripartite agreement, so the effect of which, correct me if I'm wrong, is that while injections can be made to the resources for NAMI, withdrawals cannot be made. So that we, the government cannot really draw on any of the income made from commercialization of outcomes, correct, Mister Ivan Lee? Well, basically, even if they use such resources on the center, it would not be the case that they would be distributed among members because it is a company limited by guarantee. The resources will only be used in the center, for example, to train talents. Basically, the income will only be used for the work of NAMI to make sure better work is done. Mister Porter. There must be a reason for updating the agreement in twenty eighteen. Were there any disputes? Was there perhaps litigation that made you update the agreement? Mister Ivan Lee, from what I remember, there weren't any disputes. It's just said in our regularly, regular communication with NAMI, they ask for incentives to promote commercialization. Having discussed the relevant arrangements, we believe the relevant arrangements are appropriate. Deputy Chairman. I think this direction is welcome because there has to be a proper arrangement for distribution of commercialization income. Chairman, if you allow it, we can perhaps take a break before we commence part four. I believe parts four and five won't take too long. Can, are we going to discuss parts four and five combined? Yes, and if possible, we can take a short break, and then we'll look at parts four and five combined. We'll come back later. Thank you.